With that, calling this meeting to order. And if, Krista, if you could call the role plays.
Councilmember Soltes.
I'm here.
Councilmember Porter.
Here.
Councilmember Hertzak.
Here.
Councilmember Herthausen.
Present.
Councilmember Simomo.
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Here.
Mayor Wagner.
Here.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you, Krista. Everybody could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There we go. Thank you. Thank you all for that. With that, look for approval of agenda. Regan, do we have any changes tonight?
No changes, ma'am. So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. Next up is public communication. We have PFAS contamination report. Rebecca Eicher. Did I pronounce that right? Or did it H-er? You'll find out. Oh, they're remote. That's where nobody's standing up.
Hi there.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. I'm Rebecca Eicher, if that's helpful.
Thank you. And you have a presentation for us tonight. You ready?
I do, yes. I was gonna talk to you all about PFAS, which I think I was hoping someone would share the slides for me since I'm a little bit limited in my capacity to share slides.
IT is pouring up the presentation now.
Great. So while that's happening, I can just tell you a little bit. So PFAS stands for per- and polyfluoralecyl substances. These are synthetic compounds that we have been learning a lot about over the last couple of years. So this evening, what I was going to talk to you about was managing PFAS in drinking water for safer and healthier communities. So if we want to go to the next slide. So I'm from an organization called the American Association for the Advancement of Science. We're a nonpartisan, science-based organization in Washington DC. We are a scientific society. So we have about 120,000 members who are scientists, engineers, mathematicians from all over the world. We're the publishers of a family of journals known as Science and then the Science Family of Journals. And then 250 affiliate scientific societies and associations. And a program called the Science and Technology Policy Fellowship Program, which places scientists in federal agencies, Congress, to help with the policy process infusing science into policy. Next slide. The EpiCenter or the Center for Scientific Evidence in Public Issues is a part of AAAS. We're a program within. And our mission within AAAS is to bring clear, concise, and actionable scientific evidence to decision makers like yourselves. So city council members, county council members, state and regional decision makers, federal decision makers, agency representatives, really anyone who's in a position where science can help inform their decision making. Next slide. So we work on a range of topics. Tonight, I'm here to speak with all of you about PFAS, which are drinking water contaminants. But you can see that there's a range of different topics that we work on. And again, the idea is that we bring the scientific evidence to light and help that hope that it informs your decision making. Next slide. So what are PFAS? So as I mentioned, these are a class of over 9,000 synthetic compounds, meaning that they are man-made. They have a very unique chemical structure where they have this carbon-fluorine bond, which is one of the most strengthened, strongest bonds in chemistry. What that does is it makes these compounds very persistent. But then, along with that, they have some interesting chemistry that makes them repel water and repel oil and grease, along with being very heat resistant. So this makes them persistent, mobile, and unfortunately bioaccumulative in people and wildlife. So what does it matter that these compounds exist? So they've actually been in our consumer goods since the 1950s. They provide water resistance, heat resistance, grease resistance. So when you think about your carpets, your upholstery, your outdoor clothing, your shoes, everything where you see that water beat up on it in the rain is likely because of some PFAS compound. They're also used in non-stick cookware. So that coating on the pan that allows your scrambled egg to slide right off is likely due to a PFAS. It's also used in food packaging material. So when your food doesn't leak, if your microwave popcorn bag gets really hot, but the butter still stays inside, again, that's probably from one of these compounds. It's also used on waxes, for waxes, on floors, on keys. It's even provided in some dental floss to make it slide a little bit easier between your teeth. Paints, they, as they explore more and understand where these compounds are, they find them in many, many consumer goods. And the real challenge is that these compounds have been found to be toxic and associated with a number of adverse human health effects. And they're found in drinking water throughout the United States in many different communities. If we want to go to the next slide. So I mentioned that they are linked to human health impacts. So this is a list of some of the places where PFAS has a human health impact. They have been found in about 98% of Americans' blood. So most of us have PFAS in us. And they can stay in the human body for quite a while. And again, have been linked to these different types of human health issues. Thyroid disease, high cholesterol, kidney cancer, liver disease. They also can pass through the placental barrier. So they are getting to babies in utero as well as being passed through breast milk. Next slide. So how are we exposed to PFAS? You know, I mentioned that they're in these consumer goods that we use. But they also get into our drinking water from a number of different paths into our drinking water, our environment, and then our bodies. So you can see here, this is kind of a diagram to highlight the different ways that PFAS move through the system. And you can see these arrows pointing to the surface water and groundwater. So they can come in through landfill leachate. So the runoff from a landfill from all those consumer goods that we throw away with PFAS on them can get into our groundwater. Some PFAS have been incinerated to deal with them. So they can be released into the air. And then the PFAS can, you know, rain down onto the soil and the surface water and eventually make their way back into our drinking water that way. Industrial facilities, so those places where PFAS are being manufactured, are then releasing them. Airports. So airports and military bases used something called aqueous film-forming foam to put out fires. And it was found that PFAS was a major component in most ATRF, that aqueous film-forming foam. So where you have an airport or DoD military bases, there's often been PFAS contamination from this ATRF. So this is just a diagram to kind of help you think about the system and how PFAS is move, how PFAS are moving through this system. And we're continually being exposed through our drinking water, through the air, and then even through consumer goods. Next slide. So what's happening at the federal level around dealing with PFAS? So I mentioned that they are drinking water contaminants. There are two really well-studied PFAS known as PFOS and PFOA. So the EPA has started to begin the process of setting primary drinking water standards for those two compounds. In June of this year, they released interim health advisory levels for PFAS, for PFOA and PFOS. You can see here, the numbers are .004 parts per trillion and .02 parts per trillion. These are what we would consider near zero levels. So they're actually below detection levels. So right now, the science to detect PFAS is around two parts per trillion. And the EPA has set a health advisory saying you shouldn't be exposed above this .004 parts per trillion level. Health advisories are advisories. They are not regulatory. So right now, there is no federal drinking water standard for PFAS. There's other activity at the federal level. So Congress continues to look into legislation, different activities to try and monitor reduced pollution from exposures, different ways to deal with PFAS. And a number of the federal agencies are launching task force, releasing action plans to really think about how to manage PFAS from their different agencies and mission. CDC, ATSDR are doing a lot of research to understand community exposure and what is happening on the landscape. But again, there are no federal regulations for PFAS in drinking water at the time that we're talking this evening. What you can see on the right is a map. And this is just a map to give you some context for where we have found PFAS. If you look at a state and you say, oh, let's look at Washington. It doesn't look too bad. You know, we only have a few dots. That's actually because sampling has probably not happened in those places. So where you look for PFAS, you are likely to find it. But this map starts to give you some context for how ubiquitous these compounds are. Next slide. So we talked a little bit about the federal landscape. So what are states doing? A number of different states, Washington State being included in this list, have begun to take action at the state level for regulating PFAS, for sampling and monitoring to better understand, again, what their map might look like. So where are PFAS? Where, what are the levels that their, their communities are dealing with? Some states have set drinking water standards. Many states have health advisories for PFAS. Again, two of the most common are PFOA and PFOS. They've been around the longest, so we know the most about them. You may also hear people talk about Gen X. That is another PFAS that was manufactured and created to kind of replace these older PFOA and PFOS when the known health impacts came out. But what we're finding as we study Gen X is that that compound also has similar human health impacts. Maybe on a different system within the human body, but still does have negative human health impacts. In Washington State, we, the state has started looking at banning the use of PFAS in food packaging and other consumer goods, as well as exploring what to do with all that ATRF, that aqueous film-forming foam that are being stored at our military sites and in airports. So you can just kind of see from the picture, some of the primary sources and some of the secondary sources of PFAS. And this is just a list of some of the ways that states have been responding over the last few years. Next slide. So we said these are drinking water contaminants. So why don't we just remove them from the system? So conventional treatment does not remove PFAS from our drinking water. There are three more common advanced treatment methods that can remove some PFAS, but not all PFAS. So you can use what's called granular activated carbon, ion exchange, or reverse osmosis and nanofiltration. These different methods can remove different types of PFAS, and some are better at others. But these have been known to, yes. The challenge, of course, is that it's costly. Not all PFAS are removed by all technologies. And then third, just because you've removed them from the drinking water does not mean that you've actually dealt with the PFAS. What you've done is taken them out of the drinking water and changed that exposure pathway. But again, thinking back to that diagram, you then need to do something with the media that has collected all those PFAS. So the granular activated carbon filters, they're going to be filled with PFAS. So then you actually need to find a way to destroy them. And right now, destruction is a big question mark. And we don't really have any known methods for consistently destroying PFAS. The different kinds, lots of different questions. But it still remains a pretty big question in the scientific community about methods to really destroy these compounds. Next slide. So as I mentioned, PFAS destruction and disposal is sort of that next question. If we remove them from our drinking water, how do we deal with them? So right now, there are some current options for destruction around very high heat. Because of that carbon-fluorine bond, it's really difficult to break that bond. So high heat and high pressure is one way that that bond can be broken. But it's not a foolproof method because they can actually create shorter chain PFAS and different types of molecules. So there's a lot to be explored in that space. But heat and pressure is one method that has some real promise. Again, disposal, so getting rid of them and putting them somewhere. One current option is a landfill. But again, if you put that in a landfill, then that landfill leachate needs to be managed. So what do you do with that leachate? And we come back to the question of destroying PFAS. For now, many cities, communities, states are storing their PFAS until we can figure out a solution for actually destroying them. So ATRF is being stored onsite at airports, on military bases, at firefighting houses. You know, just kind of holding on to it until the science can start to help identify solutions. There are some emerging destruction technologies that scientists are getting very excited about and exploring a little bit further. And we actually have a webinar coming up on October 12th that is going to talk about these emerging destruction technologies and kind of where they sit from a scale perspective, from a cost perspective, and also from an effectiveness perspective. I can share a couple of links in the chat or share them via email with you all, however best works. But there, there is that webinar, if that's of interest. So if we want to go to the next slide. As I'm talking with all of you, you may be thinking like, I'm hearing about these PFAS. What, what's going on in my community? How do I start to learn a little bit more about this? So we know that risk communication and community engagement are crucial to building the relationships that help community members understand what's happening in their community, what kind of PFAS contamination there may be or there is. And just kind of thinking through how best to engage with different issues and communities as, as you start to explore what's happening with PFAS. The AAAS EpiCenter about two years ago released a set of guides. They're called Addressing Per- and Polyfluoralecyl Substances in Drinking Water for Local and State Leaders. So they provide an introduction to the science, as well as some sampling methods, some treatment methods, and then a guide really around risk communication. So if that is at all of interest or help for you all, I'm happy to provide you with that information as well. So really, you know, thinking about whether you all know what's happening with PFAS in your community or beginning to explore what's happening, I think there's a lot of questions around what's happening throughout different communities in the US. And we know that PFAS are impacting communities. And they're also an environmental justice concern because many communities are experiencing multiple challenges and PFAS being just one of them. So next slide. I sort of mentioned this already. So we've created a set of guides. We bring together scientists, engineers, and policymakers like yourselves to really discuss how to address PFAS. We share scientific evidence. We provide opportunities for city council members to talk amongst themselves and share about what they're doing, what they know in their communities. And of course, lessons learned as different communities have been dealing with PFAS. So we're really here to help engage local, state, and federal leaders to understand the current evidence on PFAS contamination, treatment, remediation, and risk, and then the risk communication pieces around that. And we hope to continue to inform local, state, and federal policy around PFAS contamination. Next slide. This is just kind of a summary of what we've talked about today. So PFAS, they're really common in consumer goods. They're persistent. They bioaccumulate and they move through the environment. They're linked to human health issues, including cancers, developmental issues in fetuses, as well as challenges to the mother, and then thyroid issues, cholesterol, a whole list of different health impacts. There are no federally enforceable drinking water standards for PFAS at this time. Many states are exploring how they're, they're dealing with PFAS at the state level. And we would just say, you know, engaging with your community, community members is really crucial to addressing PFAS contamination within your communities. Next slide. So this is my information. If you have any questions, you can feel free to email me. And then this is the, the web address for those guides that I mentioned that were created specifically for local and state leaders like yourselves.
Thank you, Rebecca. You've mentioned links and some information. If you could share that with Krista Bates, and then she can get it out to the council during your presentation. So appreciate that. You have time for a few quick questions? If there are any.
Hi Rebecca. Thank you. That was fascinating and frightening. How long have we been collecting data about the harmful impacts?
So how long have, have scientists been collecting this data? Or how long have companies that manufacture?
You know, both would be helpful, yeah, if you have.
Yeah. So, so of course, you know, these, these chemicals, any harm, any known human health effects should have been reported through EPA's reporting process for these types of compounds, even though they may not be regulated for drinking water. We still do have regulations around toxic substances. So there's a lot of question as to what companies knew when. So I can't answer that one per se. But scientists have been studying and, and starting to understand these. I'd say really in the early 2000s, so you know, around 2003, 2004, some science, some toxicologists started to really look into these compounds. And since about 2015, it has really grown exponentially in our understanding. One of the big challenges is that we don't actually know all of those 9,000 compounds. It sounds strange to say, but because scientists are creating them in a lab and then they're being made in these big vats of chemicals and, and creating them, they're actually byproducts that are part of that carbon-fluorine chain that we don't know anything about. So we, we have a lot of information about PFOA and PFOS. So two of the thousands of compounds that are out there. Gen X is another one that we're starting to learn more about. But many of these compounds, we haven't even yet done the human health studies because we don't even know which compounds and how ubiquitous a particular compound is.
Okay. And then second question, I know you keep referencing human health impacts, but have there, is there or has there been data collected on environmental ecosystem, other, you know, living organisms or?
Yeah, yeah, that's a great point. And you know, the way that we've been working with this and sharing information, it's really focused on the human health side. But yes, these do accumulate. They've been found in polar bears. You know, most recently, there was a study that came out that it's, it's coming down in rain all across the globe. So these compounds are really common in all, in our ecosystem. There is the linkage with, with sludge, so biosolids. So if those are land applied to an agricultural field, plants will take up PFAS. And then it becomes a food web issue as well. So cattle that eat contaminated plant material then become contaminated. They're also drinking the contaminated ground or contaminated water from groundwater or surface water. So it does become a food chain issue as well. So found in all different types of organisms. And states do release different fish advisories, so fish consumption warnings. If the PFAS levels have been found to be too high in, in fish, they'll, you know, warn not to eat fish caught in different water bodies.
But aside from accumulation, any identifiable impacts?
Yeah. So, so from, when, in the human health context, many of those studies are actually done on animals. So for the human health side, there are animal models that people use, as well as epidemiological studies. So actually studying human populations and their blood and their linkages to human health. But then animal studies that do show different impacts on, on systems like kidney, testicular, liver disease, thyroid, cholesterol. So all of that have been found in animal studies, in wildlife, and then in humans.
Okay. Thank you.
Those are great questions. Thanks for helping me clarify.
Rebecca, hi, Sean Smith. How are you?
Great. How are you?
Good. I just have a, basically a, a comment. For those on the desk that don't know, this is primarily what I work on at Ecology is PFOS pretty much all day. There is a Hollywood movie called Dark Waters that basically talks about PFOS contamination. So if you don't want to watch a scientific speech on it, you can watch a Hollywood movie that basically talks about this very issue. And I encourage you to just type in the acronym PFOS into your Google and you will lose sleep over how ubiquitous this is. So I think the key points just coming out of this, Rebecca, I appreciate your, your presentation is PFOS is basically everywhere. It is in our environment. All of us have it in our blood. And it is not tested for by our municipal drinking water sources. So I think the takeaway from this presentation is we need to look at ways to have conversations with our water districts about how we start looking for and addressing PFOS because it is coming. The feds are going to start regulating this chemical. And I understand, you know, water districts really don't want to look for it because soon as they look, they're going to find it and they have to start treating it. So we have to help them find the resources in order to do this. So kind of like what Rebecca said, Washington looks good. We only have a few spots, but that's because we're really not looking for it. So anyway, thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Rebecca. I appreciate you coming tonight. Kind of like what Rebecca said, Washington looks good, we only have a few spots, but that's because we're really not looking for it, so anyway, thank you Jeff, thank you Rebecca, I appreciate you coming tonight. Oh, and send us the link to the the webinar on October 12th, that'd be great, so. Anybody else have questions? Alright, thank you Rebecca for being here tonight, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, it was really nice to talk with all of you, take care.
Have a great evening.
You too.
Next up is we have four proclamations to give, so if council could join me in front of the dais.
Council, could one of you move one of the microphones to face the council in front of the dais?
That one won't, the wireless won't pick up very well.
Yeah. Yeah.
Alright, so our first of four proclamations, we have the Mayor's Day of Concern. For the hungry coming up, and I would like to ask our newest. Executive Director for the Storehouse, if you could join us up here tonight. Well, first off, congratulations on becoming our newest executive director, I shouldn't say our, but the Storehouse's executive director.
It's our, our community.
So Mayor's Day of Concern is an event that we do. To raise money, raise money and. For the Storehouse to help feed the hungry. And this will be coming, we usually do it in September of every year and we meet at Safeway. To collect food on the one day of the year. But we do also do events, the Storehouse does quite a few events throughout the year to raise food and pet food for the Storehouse. With Jonathan in the audience who helps with the pet food drive. So this proclamation, whereas the city of Covington recognizes the importance of adequate nutrition. As a basic right for each citizen by providing financial support for our local food banks. Which provide individuals and families in need with the necessities to thrive so that no one's helped jeopardized by lack of appropriate food. And whereas our local food banks, working with the city of Covington, local churches, community groups and volunteers. Distribute food to thousands of Covington residents annually. And whereas the emergency feeding program coordinates the annual Mayor's Day of Concern on the third Saturday in September. Now therefore, we the city council of the city of Covington, who hereby proclaim September 17th, 2022. As Mayor's Day of Concern for the hungry. In the city of Covington and strongly urge all citizens to donate food or funds to our local food bank, the Storehouse. To nourish those who are hungry. And this will be held from 10 to 3:30 this Saturday at Safeway here in Covington, and I'd like to give this proclamation to you Jennifer. Thank you. Okay, and is there anything you'd like to say?
Just thank you for your continued support, I come in and 24 hours later, we. Because it's because of all the work and the partnership that has already built, so thank you for realizing that the nourishment in our community is just one part. And extending the walls going into personal assistance and services to another, and that is also what the money helps us with, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Constitution Week, and I believe we have somebody online from the voter chapter.
Hello, can you hear me, this is Karen Norris from Lakota's D A R Chapter.
Well, thank you for joining us tonight, I have a proclamation that I'd like to read for you. We started doing this proclamation several years ago when a council member was on here. She was also with the Lakota Chapter. And this proclamation, whereas September 17th, 2022. Marks the 235th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America. By the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary. And to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America. Designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, we the city council of the city of Covington, who hereby proclaim the week of September 17th. Through the 23rd of 2022 to be Constitution Week. In Covington and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. So I'll give you, hand you this proclamation virtually and we will make sure and get it mailed out to you. We appreciate you putting this forward, do you have anything that you'd like to add tonight?
Yes, so on behalf of the Code of Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution. A member of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution, we thank you for recognizing constitutionally and declaring a proclamation. As you probably already know, the Daughters of the American Revolution is a patriotic society. And we take the Constitution very seriously. The Constitution is the framework for our government and our government is only as good as our Constitution. We feel it's important that every American have a fundamental understanding of the. Constitution so that we can carry out our most important work of freedom, equality and the pursuit of happiness. We must appreciate the rights and responsibilities that it gives us to ensure the proper governance of our society. So it's quite fitting that we take this anniversary of the Constitution to reflect on and honor this document and those that wrote it. I really appreciate. You for this proclamation and I thank you and the council for your time.
And thank you for attending tonight, we'll make sure you get a copy of this. Thank you.
I'll let Krista know where to send it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation for childhood cancer, do we have anybody joining us tonight for consecutive proclamation?
Mayor, I don't believe we have anyone pretending to accept it.
We'll make sure to get it sent out. This is a proclamation, whereas cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among US children between infancy and age 15. And is detected in more than 16,000 of our country's young people every year. An estimated 400,000 children and adolescents are diagnosed with cancer globally each year. And whereas one in five of our nation's children loses his or her battle with cancer. Many infants, children and teens will suffer from long-term effects of comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancer. And whereas the causes of childhood cancer are largely unknown. And more studies are needed to understand which treatment works best for children. As cancer treatment for children often must differ from traditional adult treatments. To take into account children's developmental needs and other factors. Now therefore, we the city council of the city of Covington, who hereby proclaim the week of September 25th. Through October 1st, 2022, be childhood cancer awareness week. In the city of Covington, as Covington is a caring city with a community that strongly supports children and family. We'll make sure this gets sent off to the childhood cancer awareness group and we want to. Thank you for bringing this forward to us, we wish it didn't have to be this, we wish there was no cancer. Children for everybody. So thank you. Next, we have a proclamation for National Recovery Week and I believe you have Bethany, come on up if you'd like. Thank you for being here tonight. Right here. There are proclamations, whereas behavioral health is an essential part of one's overall health and wellness. And whereas mental and or substance use disorders affect all communities nationwide. But with commitment and support, people with these disorders can achieve healthy lifestyles and lead rewarding lives and recovery. And whereas the impact of mental and or substance use disorders is apparent in our local community. And an estimated 575,000 people in King County are affected by these conditions. By seeking help, people who experience mental and or substance use disorders can embark on a new path toward improved health and overall wellness. And whereas through Recovery Month. People become more aware of and able to recognize the signs of mental and substance use disorder. Which can lead more people into needed treatment. Managing the effects of these conditions can help people achieve healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally. Now therefore, we the city council of the city of Covington, who hereby proclaim the month of September as National Recovery Month. In the city of Covington and call upon the people to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities and ceremonies supporting national recovery. I'd like to give you this proclamation, thank you for all that you do for helping with this and bringing awareness to it.
Sure, I am Bethany Murphy, I'm the King County's Behavioral Health and Recovery Division. I'm a social worker and I'm also proud to share with you that I'm someone in recovery from both mental health and. So we know that with the right supports in place, people can and do get better. You're really helping to do things around behavioral health issues that individuals and families. Isolated and really fearing for reaching out, so I really appreciate your efforts today. On behalf of County Behavioral Health Recovery Division and all the residents of Covington who are in recovery. I truly thank you, thank you so much for today's proclamation.
Everyone cannot sneak up on anybody. Alright, thank you all very much for joining us with the public communication and proclamations tonight. Next up is our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, address and organization, comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. I'll call on those in the audience here first, and if there's anybody online that would like to address council, I will call on you, please raise your hand. First up is Katrina Doan. Welcome.
My name is Katrina Doan, my address is 1444246th Avenue South in Tuck Willa, Washington, 98168. I am with TNT Fireworks. And I am coming to share a win-win-win idea that several local municipalities have been either have embraced or looking into. As a possible way of dealing with what I jokingly refer to as a hot topic, I think every.
You can ignore that.
That was the fastest form I've ever had, wow. I'm flies in Covington. So I wanted to share this because as I recently took this job with TNT, I was a teacher, I ran a fireworks stand for 29 years, starting out when I had a foster daughter who was a gymnast and I needed a way to make money to pay for her sport. And last year, the company asked if I'd be interested in doing the area manager. And since I have done that, I have had countless conversations with communities. And different people as they work to support their nonprofits in fundraisers. But we know that fireworks truly is a hot topic for people and for communities. Everybody has an opinion. One of the solutions that many, many communities have started embracing is what is called a modified ban. Because for about 25 years, the trend has been to ban fireworks, we all know why. There there are definite drawbacks, I will be the first to stand here and agree with that. But there's also the fun of family celebrations and tradition with the fireworks that are safer. And so I know city councils have debated, how do we, how do we match these two, what do we do? A win-win-win modified ban does this. It takes the overall category of fireworks and it breaks it down, there's a category of fireworks called ground-based fireworks, if you know fireworks at all, they're fountains and below. Fountains stay on the ground, they do the pretty stuff in front of you, they don't go up in the air, they don't go boom, they just sit there and they're pretty. And then we have the novelty stuff that we probably all use, the snakes that do the little spread out on the sidewalk, the trucks and the tanks and the sparklers. And what many communities have already done is. Stepped away from a full ban and then a modified ban where they allow the ground-based fireworks as an option for their residents. Because ground-based fireworks, if you look at statistics, have almost never caused the fireworks fires. The loud booms that cause trauma. Any of the things that people complain about. So when I stepped into this job and started having these conversations, interestingly, several people in different places said, please go talk to Covington. And I'm not sure why it was people from different places. But as I see your focus on nonprofit, your your proclamations really touched me. The win-win-win is this, for people who hate fireworks, if you talk to them, I always ask people, what do you hate? I hate the things that go boom and scare my dogs, my kids, my neighbors, myself. I hate the things that fly around and, you know, I'm afraid they're going to start my house on fire, and I agree, I don't like those either. It's a win for those people because those are still illegal, nothing changes. Second, it's a win for your nonprofits because most fireworks locations are run by nonprofits, they can still make that fundraising money that they count on. It's a win for your families because they can still have a safe. Family celebration or neighborhood celebration. And it's a win for the city because you get some control over what people go and pick up, because most people will go to their closest stand. So Tuck Willa enacted this last year and I see I have 29 seconds. The results, the fire and police chief came to the city council meeting to share the results because they did it and they said, we're going to look back at the data, we want the statistics. They said it was the lowest incidence of calls for service over the 4th of July period in over 20 years. Zero fireworks fires and zero fireworks injuries and $45,000 were raised for four nonprofits in the community. By allowing fireworks. And I would love the opportunity to work with you if you feel like this might be something that is interesting for your community. I'm available and I would love to talk with anybody further, thank you so much.
Thank you for being here Katrina. Next is David Wright. Welcome.
Name is David Wright, representing the Covington Library, ACLS. Address is 27164th Avenue, southeast. Alright, so. So I'm the regional manager overseeing the Covington branch here and I wanted to introduce myself to the council and tell briefly about what's happening at your library. So first, just to get some stats out there, between January and August of this year. Members of the community have visited Covington Library almost 78,000 times. And in those visits, they have checked out almost 325,000. And in those visits, they have checked out almost three hundred and twenty-five thousand items between physical and digital materials. To give you an idea of what that looks like with KCLS as a whole. In twenty-twenty-one, across our fifty branches, we've had one point three million borrowers. Who have checked out sixteen point nine million items between physical and digital materials. According to Overdrive, which is the digital lending platform that most libraries use. KCLS is the number two top digital circulating library in the U.S. and number four in the world. So we have a lot of use of the materials. Um, kind of more locally to speak about some upcoming events that are happening at your Covington Library. This upcoming weekend, Friday and Saturday, the friends of the Covington Library are having their back-to-school book sale. There to support operations at the Covington Library. On Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, starting six-thirty. The library will be hosting Reading with Rover, which is a program where kids can read the therapy dogs to build their reading skills and their confidence. And that will be an ongoing program that will happen the last or the fourth Tuesday of every month from now through November. And then finally, coming up next month, Friday, October fourteenth. The Silver Kite Community Arts will be having a seasonal watercoating program for adults of all skill levels. And information for all those programs can be found on kcls.org. I also wanted to briefly share with you that to let you know that KCLS is currently working on getting the infrastructure in place. To allow us to expand our open hours, which I know many people in the community have been asking for. We don't have a date for when that will go live at this time, but I wanted to share that it is and works. And finally, I just want to say that we love to hear from the community and about what kind of programs and services you'd like to see in your library. So I invite all of you to reach out to me and my team at the Covington Library with your ideas. We'd love to collaborate. I have copies of my card on hand that I can give for the council and for members of the public that are in the events. That's all. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for being here tonight, David. Moving, that's all I have signed up here, so let's move to Andrew online.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, welcome.
Okay, thank you. Again, my name is Andrew Barch. I'm a resident Covington resident. My address is two seven zero four seven two hundredth Avenue Southeast in Covington, Washington. Obviously, I have just two brief comments. Thank you for the presentation on the PFAS. My first comment comes from actually the Covington Water District website. I did a search based on that topic and when I typed in in the search field PFAS. And they had, it brings up only one document and they did in that document, they did amount of PFOS. A sample that was collected from the district's Whitwell Field is five point three parts per trillion. Again, this is dated in twenty-nineteen to give you a point of reference. So when they did that sample, it was five point three points per trillion, which was at the time thirteen times lower than the lifetime health advisory the EPA puts out for the PFOS. PFAS. And if you now take, if that was today, based on the lowered standards that are currently interim. For PFOS by the EPA, that standard is zero point zero two. And the minimum reporting level for parts per trillion would be a five. So you're talking, you're right there for having to report that. So that's just kind of a comment to, it's, it's on us, just like you guys have mentioned in the presentation. This is really well done. My other comment would be. As the Covington Water District or the city of Covington purchases water from other municipalities such as like Tacoma or Auburn. How will we test for that or have it pre-tested for PFAS prior to entering the water system? Just something to consider for the future. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Andrew, for being here tonight. We really appreciate your comments. Is there anybody else in the audience wishing to address council tonight? Anybody else online wishing to address council? Seeing nobody raise their hand, we will have a second opportunity for public comment towards the end of our meeting tonight. Thank you. Next is approval of the consent agenda consisting of item C one through C six.
I'll move.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Thank you. Next up is an executive session. We are going to break for approximately twenty minutes. We need longer than that.
It might actually be shorter.
Okay, so fifteen minutes. Well, we're going to break for an executive session for fifteen minutes for discussion with legal counsel regarding current or potential litigation and legal risks of current or proposed action. Pursuant to RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero subsection one, subsection A, subsection I. With that, we can stop the recording and we'll be back in approximately fifteen minutes. We'll be back at eight eleven.
Thank you, Mayor Wright.
Thank you. Welcome back. Thank you for engaging us as we had our executive session. Next up is new business. Item number one is to consider an appointment to the Covington Economic Development Council. Council wishes to take action tonight. David, Debbie.
I move to. A point, thank you. Appoint Ryland Regley as our. I'm sorry.
You're one ahead of us.
Okay. I moved to appoint Kalen Provatsky to the city's economic development commission.
Second up.
Okay, been moved and seconded to appoint Kalen Provatsky to fill a position on the Covington Economic Development Council with a term expiring July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
Kalen's done a great job already on that committee and he has a passion for the city and he could serve the, continue to serve the city well in that role.
Thanks, Beth. Can you speak to your second?
Just a big thank you for the work that's already been done. Thank you, Kalen.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? Alright, seeing no one, been moved and seconded to appoint Kalen Provatsky to fill a position on the Covington Economic Development Council with a term expiring July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Kalen has been reappointed. Thank you. Next up is to consider appointment to the youth council.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Um, so I move to appoint Ryland Regley as our next youth council member.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to appoint Ryland Regley to fill position number two on the youth council with a term expiring June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. Debbie, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. Well, I know Ryland from his volunteerism at the storehouse, but also through our Rotary Club. He is part of the youth Kent Lake Interact Club. And Ryland is just a youth leader. He, he thinks at the top level on everything I've seen him work with. Some of the things he spoke of in the interview were impressive and that is that he believes that the youth shape our future and that's so very true. And Ryland, we will look up to people like you in the future to be the next leaders of our city and our country. So. Thank you for what you do.
Would you like to speak to your second?
Sure. That was also my favorite thing that Aaron said and I'm rarely impressed with. Youth who show up in a five-piece suit and just look the part, speak the part, think the part. Kudos to you. Um, you're smart, you're intelligent, you're a big thinker. Keep it up.
Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? Alright, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Ryland Regley to fill position number two on the youth council with a term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Next up is agenda item number three, the two thousand twenty-two second quarter financial reports. Casey, welcome. Uh, we've got a.
Casey, can you please turn off your video to help with bandwidth, please? Unfortunately, that didn't help. Are you able to call in from your phone? Audio.
Mayor, if you want to move on to the next item, we can sure back to Casey once she connects. Let's move on to new business. Item number four, authorize the city manager to negotiate a sanitary sewer easement agreement. In association with the Covington Commons Commercial Site Development Project. Selena.
Yes, good evening, council and mayor. So I'm here tonight to talk with you about a request that we received from a developer, Eagle Creek Development. They're actually here in the audience tonight. The request that they put before the city council is for a sewer easement that would cross the property that's owned by the city where we purchased the school property. So Eagle Creek Development owns the property to the west of that site, of the school site. And they're doing a development on that, on that site. And in order to get sewer to the site, they need to have an access across our property. Um, we did not get here easily. We've asked the developer to evaluate many, many options as to where the sewer could go. Obviously, we always want sewer to go in the roadways if that's possible. That's infeasible at this location just due to the depths of the sewer in southeast Wax Road. And then Sioux's Creek Water and Sewer District came back and also said that was infeasible and that we really need to connect further south of that in Wax Road. So then that would be an easement for our property. And there's a bit of a map on the back, kind of on the exhibit A here, that shows the location of that sewer easement in relationship to southeast Wax Road and then the project. So what, what, as part of this conversation that we have with the developer is, okay, we understand that issue that you are faced with on your site. However, this is public property that was bought with public funds and in order for us to expend any type of authorization or easement or encumbrance on the property. We would obviously need to come to our city council and ask that question. And then also, we would need to present a public benefit, right? We're not going to give something without kind of a benefit that's tied to that. So for a few months, Dawn and I worked with Eagle Creek Development, Dawn Bondren, our public works director. And negotiated what you have before you tonight. And so what the developers proposing for their public benefits, I'm just going to run through them really quick and then I can take some answers or some questions. Is that they're proposing to extend the rest of southeast two seventy-six to southeast Wax Road. So if you've been out there now in front of Valley Medical, that roadway ends at the Polaris Affinity Project, right? And then we're kind of just missing that little chunk that would then put us out to southeast Wax Road directly across from our SoCo Park, right? And so the developer said, I will come in and build that at our costs, that remaining extension, okay? And they have a value of about six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for that. So that pays for engineering, design, and construction. Um, they will also, if we grant that sewer easement across our property, they would waive the latecomers requirement. So when a developer goes and they build an extension of a sewer through any property or area. The first in generally builds it all and then there's what's called a latecomers that's placed on top of it. But then each person that comes in and connects in the future would pay their proportionate share of that, right? So the person upstream carries that burden and then everybody kind of has to reimburse for that cost. What they've said is that we will waive that latecomers fee. So when you city go to develop on your property. You won't have to pay us back for the cost that we expended for that sewer. However, you still will have to pay your connection fees, right? But that, that would be any case. Um, and then as part of that roadway expansion, they are asking for a three hundred thousand dollar credit to their impact fees. So right now, their transportation impact fees are in about the seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollar range. And what they've asked is for a three hundred thousand dollar credit. So they still spend, they still paid up the four hundred and seventy-five that's left over. Um, and the reason for that, that ask and why we're comfortable with it is that if they were to pay us the eight hundred thousand dollars and we were then to go out and build that roadway. Um, it would actually cost us more to do that from a public bidding requirement. And so that was a little bit of the gap that they had asked to kind of offset for the cost of that extension. And we thought that was comfortable to do because either way that money would have been spent in that area. Um, and then the larger public benefit, really that comes out of this that we talked about. You know, isn't really monetary or physical, right? A connection is great. I think that is, is a really visible way of showing a public benefit. But with this extension of two seventy-six out to southeast Wax Road. We're actually completing a majority of our first downtown street that we have in our grid, right? And so their expense, their extension would extend the sidewalk on the north side. Um, and then the portion against adjacent to the city's properties, so kind of on the south, it's wonky out there, so I'm kind of using north being. Wax Road kind of runs sideways there, but, and then, and then the portion along the city's property, right? So the southern part of that roadway, we would do those improvements in the future because we don't know where those will be as of yet. And we would be working with them to make sure that we've got the right kind of transitions in place, you know, for the roadway. So there would be some other pieces of the city property that we would do for certain transitions. But for the most part, two hundred and seventy-sixth Street would be complete. Um, and with that, right? So right now you go down there, it's pretty dead end. So there's an opportunity to activate that street now, right? Because people will be able to drive through it. There'd be pedestrian access now taking you from the roundabouts. Um, all the way out to SoCo Park. And I think that's, that's probably really from a planning perspective with my planner hat on, is really kind of the exciting part is the ability to activate that area. Um, makes the ground for retail spaces out there more visible, right? Um, it provides alternative routes for the localized traffic. So folks wanting to get to southeast Covington Way, out to a light, they now have an alternative route. Um, and then it also provides more efficient access for emergency vehicles. Right now, your only way is from that roundabout. Um, and then obviously the non-motorized aspects of that, right? So you've got people that will be able to walk through the site, ultimately from SoCo Park. Now you could go from Covington first to SoCo Park instead of potentially having to drive or walk around. Um, and then just, you know, to kind of point out, within that area, with the Covington Commons project, the Affinity and Polaris, there's going to be about six hundred and twenty-two multifamily units. Just on two seventy-six. It does not include the hundred units that are at Vineyards. Um, and then kind of the redevelopment that's happening at the station and such. So really, that pedestrian connectivity is definitely added bonus. Um, so if, if this is something that the council agrees to, the fiscal impact out there would be the developer fronting the cost for that extension. Okay, um, and then assuming they get that credit for their impact fees as part of this. That they'd be investing about eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars as a public benefit in exchange for a sewer easement across our property. Um, we've also talked internally, tried a bit about the location of that sewer easement. Um, before, I think it was going a little bit through the middle of the site. They were trying to align that potentially with future road connection. There's kind of that road that's defined through the city's property. Um, because we don't have a plan yet or a known location for a lot of our infrastructure. We've actually been able to push that to the more southern end of the property with, that would be within any kind of setback that we would have on our property. Um, thinking that that might be the least impactful of our options. However, if and when we develop our city property, then if we needed to move that, we would do that at our cost. But that cost is pretty minimal compared to what it will cost to develop the site. So we were comfortable with not asking them to extend anything further if we need to move it. Um, is there any questions? A kind of a quick, quick summary of, of the ask.
Thank you. A comment and a couple of questions. I definitely see the benefit of extending two hundred and seventy-six. I know Beth and I were out of Polaris this weekend. And coming from where we live, towards the Covington crawl around just to get there. So access to the, that densely populated area of our community, having alternative routes makes complete sense to me. So I applaud the efforts in that solution. My first question is, and you kind of alluded to this, I mean, what are potential impacts on our future development?
Right. So I think that the potential impacts are a little bit unknown, right? So we could guess a thousand different ways that the location of the sewer could impact our property in the future. Most notably is just if we put something there and the sewer needs to move, right? That's going to be our largest impact is having to move a sewer connection. We put something there and the sewer needs to move, right? That's going to be our largest impact is having to move a sewer connection. And like I said, I, you know, we talked a little bit about this internally and the cost of that. It's nominal. It's, I think, in about a hundred thousand dollar range. But if you're looking at it, a million dollar plus project that. That that weight isn't very heavy in that calculation. You know, there. I I think that's probably the biggest one that comes to my mind. It would be different if we had a site plan or something more planned out, then we could kind of push and pull on that location and probably exact it better. For us in the future, but I think moving that to the south. Is kind of our best way to keep it out of the way of kind of the main middle of that portion.
Okay. And then my second and last question. If this were approved by council, what would be the timelines on that two seventy six extension?
So the two seventy six extension, excuse me, extension would get constructed at the time the project's constructed. So they would be building, they have obviously their site work that they have to do. And then the friendage improvements that they're required to do as part of their project. And then once they're, once the developers mobilize, they'll generally just mobilize the entire at the same time. So it would be congruently with the development of their site.
Okay. And do we know the expected timelines on that?
I think if they were willing, they would do this now, but we are still. They're still in development review process with the city. So we just issued their environmental. Review and then now we're going through this step and then moving towards an approval. I think once they get an approval, they're going to want to come in for permits. So this could be, you know. I don't know. You get a permit. So what are you eighteen, twenty four months construction, eighteen months construction? So you'd probably see this into twenty twenty four.
Right. Thank you.
Anybody else have questions?
Thank you, Selena. Appreciate this. I too was out of letters. Yeah, it was Saturday morning early in the morning. And that's, it's funny. I've never driven down to that end of that road. So now I have a. Relationship with that. And I really do appreciate the the offer to extend that that road. So I think that. Would provide significant public benefit. I'm just wondering, so you kind of answered. General's question about does it putting the sewer line, is that putting limits on what we can do with our property? Would it limit what we could build out there or on top of that or?
Well, yeah, anytime you have a sewer or water, any type of utilities, those sit in easements. And those are generally pretty restricted. So we wouldn't be able to put anything on top of that.
How big is that? Like a ten foot? Do we put a trail through there?
Yeah, generally you can do kind of those mixed, you know, you can put a trail, a walkway. Basically, you're not going to be able to build.
Yeah, so that would be something to make it aesthetic. And then the other thing, having just been to Polaris, I noticed that there is a opening in the fence for kids from Polaris to get over to our playground over there. The old Covington Elementary. I see the development here that might close that. Is there a way to, in this agreement, make an attractive access to that? Playground or at least put a gate and a fence that doesn't make it look like you're not supposed to go through there or something?
On the city property?
Well, on the extension of the road on two seventy second, there's, because they're going to, I understand where your property is, it's where the gate is now. And so I would suspect that would either get closed or changed. It'd be nice if that gate was moved. Further down on the new extension of two seventy, whatever it is.
So that's Polaris property you're talking about?
Yeah.
No, it's no, it's outside.
So we opened it up so that people could come easy and we can easily.
Yeah, that's what I would do. Yeah. So let's just make sure we move that. So and. It looks like it's a little bit sketchy right now, if we like a better word. So make it look more like people are allowed to go through that gate or whatever. So.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah, and I think we can probably coordinate with Polaris on the on the extension of that roadway and kind of. What that fundamentally will look like because we will be, they'll be going and the developer will be going in and building sidewalk, curb gutter. So there'll probably be some.
Yeah, that'd be great if it was accessible, you know, so. So anyway, just something to think about. So thank you.
Anyone else? Councilor should take action tonight.
A comment, a question?
Okay.
That's it. Yeah. So I appreciate, first of all, all the work that went into this and looking, looking at it from trying to reach a win-win. I think that's important for everybody. I I do want to also talk about the, well, I just talked about, but the design of it too, because it is going to be going out into a road. What is that intersection or that, you know, going to look like? You know, and maybe even having a crosswalk or some other things that, right? Because right, right now it really is just basically a two lane. Road with not really a whole lot going on there. And. It'd be nice to at least elevate that if we're doing that initially in that specific section.
Right. And 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 no, that's, that's a great comment. And I'll just kind of address that. So what they provided us is just basically like these two dimensional engineering, right? Just to kind of show what that would be. And then as part of their requirement, they'll be looking more into the design of that. And if we want to talk about signals and stuff, that's an added benefit that council would like them to consider in that. And, you know, that's.
Or at least a turn lane, like the other road has, you can at least turn onto Wax Road and you have a. A way to merge in the traffic.
Right, right. Making sure that the turning movements are addressed. Yeah, we will do that. We will do that for sure. And I will also just kind of state too that. The developer did look at the SoCo plans as well and kind of the alignment of our driveway, really trying to match that up. Staff is also really trying to keep this on property we own, right? So that we're not having to go out and acquire additional. So. Yeah, Dawn and I will be looking at those training movements and what that looks like to make sure it meets road design standards.
Great, thank you.
Councilor should take action.
I move to authorize the city manager to negotiate an easement agreement.
Seconds.
Motion in a second to authorize the city manager to negotiate an easement agreement. And easement with the owner of parcel three, six, two, two, zero, five, nine, two, zero, eight. To be returned to council for further consideration and potential action. Joe, would you like to speak to your motion?
It's. It's a road we don't have to pay for. It's transportation that has been a large, transportation has been one of the largest issues in on this council since before I got on council. And this is how we can help benefit the city, the new residents who will live there and the current residents who live there. And guess what? We didn't pay for it. That's the best part. So I I think that's, it's a no brainer.
Thank you, Joe. Beth would like to speak for a second.
I would, I would like to say that we are paying for part of it because we are not getting traffic impacting. But we're paying much less than we would have if we tried doing it on our own. And I think that is the thing for your book that our residents are going to get from that. So. Again, appreciate the the work from out there.
Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? I want to say the benefit of having the sewer going through because that's expensive. So the fact that you're able to put that through and allowing us to tie into it if we wish to. When we build our property is immense because I remember. Fifteen, sixteen years ago, when we had a different Covington Water District and a different Suez Creek District and. That would have been probably in the. Millions of dollars to that, to that connection. So luckily we have more. Reasonable people to work with now. With that, it's been moved and seconded to authorize the city manager to negotiate an easement agreement and easement with the owner of parcel three, six, two, two, zero. Five, nine, two, zero, eight to be returned to council for further consideration and potential action. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Yes, passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council.
With that, has Casey been able to get back on?
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, Casey, welcome back.
Yes, thank you. Now I just have to see if I'm able to share my screen here. Chris, it doesn't look like I have that ability. There we go. Okay, I have it now. Sorry. All right, are you able to see that? Okay?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, apologize for not being in person tonight. I'm a little under the weather. So I was really just trying to build that anticipation by making you guys bump me a little bit. Sorry about that. Okay, so as always, the first page is just the summary by fund and we'll get into that in more detail as we go through each fund. So I'm going to skip this first page. All right, so for property taxes, so for property taxes for second quarter, we've received about one point six million dollars. We're a little higher than last year's collections. By four point five percent. And just a reminder that our S F value right now is about three point seven billion. And we're eighteen point four percent over our previous year. So we've got some growth there. So our real estate excise tax, this is really a bright spot for us right now. We've, I'm checking to see if we've hit a record for this year, but we've brought in an incredible amount of money. Through second quarter collections, we've brought in one million forty thousand dollars or a hundred and fifteen point six percent of our budget. There were seventy nine new home sales, a hundred and ninety four existing home sales. Seventeen lot sales through second quarter. And just to put that in some perspective for. As compared to twenty twenty one, there was eighty five new home sales for twenty twenty one and two hundred existing home sales. So we are down a little bit through second quarter as far as housing sales goes. But I will tell you through August, through year to date. We've received one point nine two million dollars in REIT so far, so almost double what we've received through second quarter. So our cash balance right now, just to put this in some perspective, will cover our debt service for this year and next year. As of right now, if I was to bring in no additional REIT revenues for the year. So that's, that's great news for us. For retail sales, so just as a reminder, we have some different components of retail sales. We have an unrestricted sales tax portion. And those are above twenty twenty one estimates at about eight point four percent higher. Our total collections are at three point one million or fifty seven point six percent of budget. Our retail came in higher at point seven percent. Construction was higher at forty four percent and food services were higher at thirteen one point one percent and all other categories by fifteen point four percent. At the same time period for twenty twenty one. What I will mention though is one thing that we are keeping an eye on is retail is our biggest category for sales tax. And our top five retailers have all dipped. Four out of the six months so far this year. So we're keeping an eye on those those retailers. And then we have a couple other sales taxes that are restricted and those are the HB fourteen oh six and the HB fifteen ninety. So the HB fourteen oh six, we've collected just a little over fifteen thousand dollars. It shows that the decrease over twenty twenty one collections. But those fourteen oh six funds, we get a capped amount each year. It's about forty two thousand dollars and we'll receive all of that this year. And the total collections for HB fifteen ninety are three hundred and sixty five thousand. It shows us the huge jump over twenty and twenty one collections, but that's just because it just started last year and we had two less months that we're comparing it against. So for utility taxes, second quarter is up about seven point six percent over second quarter twenty twenty one. We've collected about fifty nine point two percent of our budget. And if you look at the chart on the right, every category has seen an increase except telephone. We've been seeing telephone kind of go down every year for the past several years. For the general fund, our operating revenues are at fifty six point nine percent. So they are above where we would anticipate seeing them this time of year. Total expenditures are at five point six nine three million. And we've spent about forty six point five percent of our budget. So again, we're under where we should be this time of year. So that's great. Expenditures are up. I mean, expenditures are down and revenues are up. And then if you look at the chart here, there's just a couple that I'll point out that may look a little odd to folks. So the law enforcement line, if you're looking at twenty twenty two versus twenty twenty one. This is just a timing issue of when we received our first police bill for the year. They generally bill us. The first five months of the year when we get our first big property tax payment. That's kind of how they've worked it over the years. So. In twenty twenty one, we just hadn't received that bill yet. And in twenty twenty two, we did. So that's why there's that that big increase there. And then the only other thing I will mention is the CLFRS funds and those are the American Rescue Plan Act funds. That three hundred and eighty one thousand as of July is actually got absorbed into the general fund. So you'll, you won't see that line item going forward. There will, that fund won't be there anymore. So for public works, this is the street fund and the swim fund. So first off, for the street fund. Our operating revenues are at about five hundred and sixteen thousand or forty eight point two percent. So just below budget estimate. And they have a couple of major revenues that we usually keep an eye on. The first one is the Comcast franchise fee. And it's coming in at fifty two percent of budget. So that's looking good. Our gas taxes are at forty nine point one percent of budget. So a little bit low, but they're up. Compared to twenty twenty one. And lastly is the motor vehicle license fees. And those are also down just a little bit, four point one percent. And we're also keeping an eye on those a little bit. We just got a new vehicle count from the Department of Licensing and our vehicles have actually gone down a little bit. So we're seeing just a little bit less of revenue in that area. For total expenditures for the street fund excluding transfers, we're at forty two point five percent of budget. So again, those expenditures are down below budget estimate, which helps even that out a little bit. And for the street fund, the general fund does subsidize it. And our operating revenues versus our operating expenditures are about, there's a hundred and seventeen thousand dollar difference. And the operating transfers of about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the general fund help offset that deficit. And then for the swim fund, our total operating revenues are at fifty three point four percent. Right where we expect them to be, we've received that first half of the drainage utility payments that's included on your property tax bill. So we're right where we should be. And then the total expenditures are twenty eight point seven percent of budget. And that's because there's a couple of capital projects that haven't occurred yet this year that may be pushed to next year, actually. For development services, for total revenues, we're at twenty three point five percent of budget. This is quite a big decrease over twenty twenty one. And the total operating expenditures are thirty two point one percent of budget. So that's helping offset it. Our revenues are down, but their expenditures are down quite a bit. The number of permits that they brought in for single family residents, that's where we're seeing the decrease in revenue coming from. We're at sixteen. As compared to fifty in twenty twenty one. But for all permit categories, we're at two hundred and forty eight permits issued compared to two ninety seven in twenty twenty one. So still quite a few permits coming through. And I will mention that. Selena and Kelly had done quite a bit of work reviewing what single family residential kind of lots were in the pipeline. And there's still a hundred and seventy eight lots that are in the pipeline that are in plat review. That we'll be seeing coming in the next twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. So there's definitely some coming. All right. So for aquatics, recreation and cultural arts. So this is the two divisions that bring in the revenue that we take a look at are the aquatics and the recreation and cultural arts. So for second quarter budget to actual for aquatics revenue, we're at sixty four percent of budget. So they're looking great. And recreation and cultural arts is at ninety four point six percent of budget. So again, well exceeding their estimates. Operating expenditures for aquatics came in at forty two point two percent of budget, so under. And recreation and cultural arts at thirty nine point nine percent of budget, so under. And if you look at the little chart there, the aquatic center slash count, you can definitely see how our numbers have been increasing from twenty twenty one's numbers. So that's good news. So for cash and investments, we're currently have have thirty four point eight million dollars in cash and investment. It's a little bit of a decrease from twenty twenty one of last year of two point, almost two point eight million dollars. And that's just because our general spending has been picking up. If you were looking at kind of that that general fund chart that we saw earlier. You can see that the, just the increase in spending. For the local government investment pool, we've earned still, it's not a lot, one percent in June. And we have twenty eight point nine invested there. We also have some investments that are outside the LGIP that I'm hoping to earn a little bit more than one percent. So. Got almost five point eight million there. And this is just a listing by fund. And then for our capital investment program, the city has collected about sixty seven thousand dollars in mitigation fees and fifty nine thousand dollars in part fee in lieu and park impact fees. And I will mention that these are tied to those single family residential unit permits. So these are also down for the year as far as collecting. So these are also down for the year as far as collections go. As far as our bonds go, we, not a lot of activity yet this year. Our principal payment isn't due until November first on the, the five million dollar bond that we still owe. And then we have the Public Works Trust Fund loan that we have made our principal payment for the year, but our balance is about four hundred and twenty nine thousand, and that is the one that's going to be paid off in twenty twenty four. So we're almost done with that one. And then just have some listings here of some of the major projects that are going on right now. I, I won't go over those in detail. But I will mention that there's a new section down here at the bottom for inter fund loans. And this new section was added as kind of part of our amended code that we did for inter fund loads, where I'm going to be updating you on what's outstanding and kind of the balances and expiration dates and things of that nature. So we currently have three inter fund loans in process for the two hundred and fourth project and the S R five sixteen Jenkins Creek, the Rapid Flashing Beacon Project, and also the Timber Lane Way Safe Routes to School Project. So those are our balances currently. And I think that is all I had. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions for Casey?
Excuse me, thank you. Casey, you mentioned that the rest of the COVID relief funds were being absorbed into the general. Is that just because we?
Sure, I can explain that a little bit better. So the rules changed with the revenue losses. When we were able to not account for them in a separate fund, we can account for them in the general fund. So what, I don't mean absorb, that's probably the wrong word to use. There's a separate department set up in the general fund now that I track all of the expenditures that you guys have approved for allocating through the ARPA funds. I just don't need to use that separate fund anymore, so it's all been moved over to the general fund.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions? Casey, thank you very much for a very thorough report. Our city's definitely very well taken care of by you and your team, so thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is new business, item number five. Consider authorizing the city manager to enter into a participation form and allocation agreement regarding the state of Washington's up to five hundred and eighteen million dollar settlement with free opioid distributor. And no, that is not our share. Turn that over to Mark.
Thank you for that clarification, Mayor Wagner. I appreciate that. And this is the second time this issue has come to council. As you'll recall, council previously authorized the execution of an M O U, the one Washington M O U that was dealing with the same settlement, but that only dealt with how potential proceeds would be divided above, up amongst the local governments. So what we have here today are two additional agreements. One, that's signing to participate in the settlement, and two, how the funds will be allocated between the state and the, and the, and the local jurisdictions. To give a little bit of background for the public, over the past few years, there have been multiple lawsuits across every single state in the country litigating the harms caused by the pharmaceutical and opioid distribution for the past decades. And the lawsuits are attempting to hold these pharmaceutical companies accountable for creating the opioid crisis. And as part of this, the Washington State Attorney General, along with multiple other large counties and cities and other jurisdictions, sued multiple pharmaceutical companies. And just recently, they reached what is this five hundred and eighteen million dollar settlement with these companies to waive the claims and to resolve the litigation. And so what this does for the city is while we're not a participant in the litigation, we have not, we're not a party. We haven't sued anyone, any of the pharmaceutical companies. But as part of the settlement, in all ninety percent of cities that have a population of greater than ten thousand, which includes Covington, must sign on to the participation agreement in order for any funds to be distributed to state and local jurisdictions. So that's what we're here for tonight, is to request council authorize the execution of the participation agreement. And as of today, as of yesterday, there were still thirty seven short of reaching their ninety percent goal. And while these, while the physical, while the numbers and the dollar amounts are not particularly large for a jurisdiction like Covington, they, these were still funds that can be used to combat the opioid crisis in our local community or be pooled for a regional effort as time moves on. And the, the main reason why I'm coming to you tonight is because there, the deadline for the settlement to be approved is on September twenty third. And so that's the time that the Washington State Attorney General requires, is need, needs to have execution of ninety percent of the participation forms. So time is of the essence, and if the city chooses not to participate in the agreement, then we may, we reserve our right to pursue these claims separately or with a consortium of other cities. And if you do agree to enter into the participation agreement, then there is a waiver and release of all the claims that have been litigated up to this point through these specific lawsuits, which the settlement agreement itself is over six hundred pages, and there's, it's been, it's been an ongoing effort for hundreds of thousands of man hours. So, and, oh, people hours, excuse me. So I'd be happy to discuss any, if you have any questions, but I think at this point, I, I, I'm recommending that council to approve both the participation agreement, waiving the claims, and also approve the allocation agreement, which will set the terms for distribution between the state and the local governments across this, across Washington.
Thank you, Mark. Does anybody have any question for Mark? Counsel, we should take action tonight. If so, which, we have, we have three potential actions tonight. One is to authorize the city manager to execute the participation form in substantial form as that presented, and authorize the city manager to execute the allocation agreement. If the city manager determines it to be the best interest of the city, that's the first one. Or we have the second one, number two, authorize the city manager to execute the participation form and allocation agreement in substantial form as that presented. Or number three, authorize the city manager to execute the participation form in substantial form as that presented, and direct the allocation agreement to be added to a future agenda.
I would like to move to authorize the city manager to execute the participation form and allocation agreement in substantial form as that presented.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the city manager to execute the participation form and allocation agreement in substantial form as that presented. Jennifer, it's like, speak to your motion.
Yes, I, it is important for the city to be a part of this in order to hold those accountable in the pharmaceutical industry for their deliberate intent to design and market these addictive pharmaceuticals to our community. Money doesn't repair the damage done, but it, it, it does something. It sends a message.
Thank you. Who was second?
I think there were three of us who seconded, so.
So we'll start with you, Joe, and then I'll work across.
Jennifer's right, the money's not going to repair the damage done, but the money's going to go to help those that the damage has occurred to, to give them treatment, to help the families to get treatment as well. It may be five hundred and eighteen million across the state of Washington. Covington will get a small piece of that pie, but we can use that money to help, we could pull it together with other cities to help those people in need, so I'm all for this.
Thank you, Joe. Beth?
I, I agree simply because as we, we've discussed, we're a small enough city that we really don't have the resources if we decided we wanted to litigate on our own, and not that we've ever thought about that. So having some, some payment to help with providing resources is better than not having anything, and to council member Harjazan's point, it does, it does send a message as well.
Thanks, Christina.
Today, we did a proclamation for National Recovery Month. A lot of people were affected by this. This, again, did not return or pay them back, but maybe provides a little bit of peace of mind.
Anybody else person speak for against motion? It's been moved and seconded to authorize the city manager to execute the participation form and allocation agreement in substantial form as that presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? It is passed. Thank you. And Mark, thank you for bringing this forward to us and consolidating it to one hundred and fifty pages.
Cut out a few for you.
Yeah.
I just want to note, did Mark read all six hundred pages and all the notes added to those pages?
Knowing our attorney, I believe he did.
I have done a lot of reading over the past.
Thank you. With that, that concludes our new business for tonight. Looking for future agenda items, our next council meeting is on September twenty seventh. At five forty, we have an interview. Six o'clock is a strategic planning study session with our council meeting starting at seven. Does council have anything else they'd like to see on a future agenda? Christina?
I actually really liked the presentation about the amended firework ban. We have children to completely eliminate. If there is an option to amend it for where everyone's happy and safe, I think that's a good idea to talk about. If there's, anyway, we can move forward with that.
Your consensus to bring that back?
I'm, I'm for talking about anything that makes things better.
Those two, the three?
I, I agree.
So there's three councils to have this brought back at a future date. Thank you. Let's go into council staff comments. Chief is not online, so it's, and Ethan?
Hey, counsel, no comments from me tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Ethan. Dawn?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. Selena?
I have nothing further, thank you.
Thanks, Selena. Casey? Still with us, Casey?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Casey.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
There's no further executive session, and I have no additional report.
Thank you, Mark. Regan?
Just by way of reminder, tomorrow evening is the C D S Business Summit, so C D S members walked around all the businesses in the community, gave them invitations to this. We're hopeful to have a decent turnout. We'll be discussing the potential B N O tax, crime in our downtown area and how we can work together to improve that. We'll do a community commercial development update so that the businesses know what's, what's in the pipeline coming. So of course, any council members that are able to attend, we'd love to have you there, and Councilmember Smith will be giving a presentation on the Public Safety Committee. So that's worth, that's worth attendance right there. And then wanted to let everybody know also something we've been doing in the mental health realm to hold Community Resource Day every month here in Covington, so it'll be the second Thursday of each month here at City Hall. And the intent is to have different providers here to be able to connect people with services. Right now, we have Valley Cities, Health Point, Salvation Army, Street Team, and Storehouse that are committed to be here each month, and so we're excited about that, and that'll start next month. And that's all, unless we, we may have to change a little bit here on our request for the fireworks.
Just briefly, I went back and reviewed council rules, and for council to put something on the future agenda that hasn't gone through the standard process or requires a majority vote of council to place something on a future agenda.
I thought we did the consensus for three, okay.
Normally, if it, to place something on a future agenda item, two, be an email in advance, and then all it requires is three upon discussion of that specific item. And that's meant to make sure that, that items that are being placed on an agenda have gone through full channels and make sure that everyone, that council does want to see these various items. So it's a procedural issue, but at the same time, this does require four at tonight's meeting, or go through the process, where it would require two emailed and then a discussion at a future council meeting.
You're the fourth person that wants to bring fireworks back.
Oh, I'm hoping to do this.
We have four. We have Joe, Debbie, Beth, and Christine.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Regan. Anything else? Krista?
Nothing for me tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Christina?
You always catch me by surprise. Benefit of sitting on the edge here. Nothing for me. We're back at school instead of absolute chaos. It is now organized chaos. But looking forward to this year and everything we can do with the council.
Thank you.
Oh, and thank you for an amazing presentation. Selena, I know that was many, many hours of work, and Mark for always doing the due diligence and having cities' best interests at mind. Thank you.
Thanks, Christina. Beth?
Yeah, I have a couple of items. The Safety Committee met a few weeks ago, and as part of this process of gathering information so that we can have a discussion with council, as, as many of you may already know, you know, we solicited feedback from businesses. The chamber held an open house. There's going to be the C D S meeting tomorrow evening, which is open to all businesses. But one of the elements of the community and stakeholder that we want to continue to include are our residents. So we have decided to host an open house for residents on Monday, October twenty fourth. And it'll be in council chambers at six P M. And so it'll be about an hour presentation, similar to what we had before for businesses, but it's an opportunity to engage with, with residents as well and talk about those things Regan talked about. Potential B N O tax or other funding sources, safety in the community and so forth, and hear from the public, so. Also, on Saturday, September twenty fourth, we are going to be celebrating Purple Light Night events all day long. It's back in action from collaborative efforts between the city, some local community groups, a few of the folks that were on the Domestic Violence Task Force. And so we encourage everybody to, to come to Covington Community Park from two P M till about four P M for the dedication. There will be a five K at, the dedication's at two thirty, a five K walk at three around Covington Community Park. And then in the evening at the Don Henning Roundabout, we'll have a six o'clock gathering and a seven thirty tree lighting. So some great ways to hopefully revive that community tradition that started here in Covington back in two thousand and four. So something we're very proud of. And finally, I did want to, to give a public shout out to all of those families that helped feed the kids when school was closed during the negotiations. Kent School District families show up. Hashtag Kent School District families show up. So collaborative effort again by everybody. And oh, I don't have the actual number, but there were thousands of lunches that passed out over that period, and it looks like we may try to have a recognition luncheon for those families that helped out. So, but that's all I have.
Thank you, Beth. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I would mention is that I really appreciated the Human Services event at Polaris this last week. It was well attended, and it seemed like we had a, a number of good partners that were presenting there as well. So it was educational and eye opening to me to see some of the groups that we partner with and the types of services that they're providing. So I thought really well done by Human Services, and I think it was really well received by the community. So I was happy to, to attend and represent the city, so thank you.
Thanks, Council.
Well, to the point earlier about the, the community members that fed the students, I had shared with a, a couple of people with the city and Mayor Wagner as well. I've never been so proud of our community as I was last week and the week before. So many people stepped up. It was our two churches in, in Covington, a number of businesses in Covington. I know there was some support from Kent as well, but Covington moms and organizations, clubs did not draw the line on, well, we'll, you know, we'll take care of the, the kids in the Covington schools. It was, we're taking care of all the kids. We don't really care about the boundaries. It was a, a huge effort, and I think when all is said and done, they will have spent probably close to twenty thousand dollars. There were a lot of very generous donations, one anonymous donation for ten thousand dollars. So people's hearts really came out. So people's hearts really came out. And then I just wanted to say I'm excited for the Mayor's Day of Concern on Saturday. So we have I think one storehouse, well, it's Jennifer that will be working with us. And I can get another board member if if need be. We have noticed over the last couple of months that pet food drives, food drives, diaper drives have all shown just a little bit less than what we have historically seen during that same timeframe. And I think it's just due to the inflation and the economic situation, but everything we we pull in will help. And if it's helpful, I can get a a little shopping list that we can hand out that says these are the high need items that are useful. Okay. What what are really needed right now are things like hygiene items and diapers. Those are things that we don't traditionally get donated. Costco donates a lot of food and produce, but not those sort of items. So I appreciate that day.
Hello, Reagan. I was curious about the community resource events that will be on Thursday. Are, I saw the flyer. One of the commissioners posted on Facebook. Will that be sent to the local schools? If not, can we do that? Yeah, a lot of the schools have a, like a quality social workaround. It's usually a partial hat someone wears. And I I think that would be really helpful.
If it's not been done, we'll do that.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. I I did go to the Human Services Commission Resource Fair at Polaris. And it, I was extremely impressed. I walked around the booths and talked to the various organizations. There's one there. It made me think when the manager of the KC LS was here. One of the organizations that was there at the event, Arcadia, it's a youth shelter in Auburn that serves our area. They actually set at a table every Saturday at our library and make themselves available for youth in the area that may be struggling with homelessness or or related issues. And I thought, you know, in the Human Services Commission didn't even know that. And when I was talking to the Salvation Army Street level, they didn't know that either. And I I mean, it was just really interesting that, you know, that you go to those events and you find out new information all the time and they get to network with each other. As well as as spread information to the community about the available resources. It was really fascinating. So I was completely impressed and they had food and everything to encourage folks to come. Sean apparently arranged for the for fire to be there and the kids were playing in the fire hose. I mean, it was like something out of a movie, you know, with the firefighters spraying the water and then the kids got to spray the water on each other. I mean, like, to me, that's like a childhood dream come true. It was a really great event. So kudos to to them and to all of these organizations. And I'm I'm looking forward to this Thursday event. I think that's fabulous. I don't know who came up with that, but that's that's fantastic. So thank you.
Thank you. Joe?
I'm just a couple of things. I had the Domestic Violence Initiative Task Force meeting. As I'm a representative from S C A on that today. First meeting we've had since May. And I was a little late because I had to take my son to school, but they were fine with it because the meetings started late anyways. The, one of the main things that we're talking about is this last year, the legislature had put out, he wanted to study the effects of when there's a domestic violence situation, someone's getting arrested and the other person is getting a list of phone numbers. There are cases with domestic violence where the arrest will do more harm than good. When I say that, it's a misdemeanor charge of domestic violence. Putting them, putting someone in jail for that or arresting them for that is not necessarily the best source or best situation. Whereas like if I were, if someone were to shove somebody and the lamp's broken, it's technically domestic violence. And there can, it could be called claimed as a misdemeanor. The latest chart, the latest study on this though was done thirty years ago. And so they're working on getting new studies to see if there's a benefit to when it comes to misdemeanor charges of domestic violence not being arrestable at that time, whereas it's just a removal of the person from the premises and giving them somewhere else and not putting them in King County jail. Something that the legislature is looking at, might be something that we'll be hearing around January. I just wanted to let you guys know about that as well because I hadn't heard about it. But that is something that they will be looking at. If you have questions about it, just I can get answers eventually. Our next meeting though isn't until so it's going to be a minute before I get more answers. So if you have questions, think about them and let me know over time. Secondly, we have skip, I have a skip meeting on Friday. And we will be going over our legislative agenda. I forwarded the the packet to Krista to forward out to all of you. If you've had a chance to look at the legislative items, you can give me some feedback on them. If not, I will make sure to do whatever is best for the city, ensuring that we're not doing anything that's going to harm us as a whole. So if anyone has read them and has any feedback on them, I'll take that right now. If not, send them in an email to Krista as I look at Mark to make sure I don't do this again. Send them to Krista so she can get them sent out properly to make sure we don't violate opium. Thank you, Mark.
I read them and I have no problem with what's posted.
Okay. Other than that, schools in session, kids are walking at weird times of the day where we're all driving, you know, morning and afternoon. Just weird to see kids out in the morning again. So be safe while we're out there. Watch for pedestrians. Watch for the crossing guards. And watch for those guys who aren't paying attention when you're trying to make a right hand turn to go into a school or a left hand turn to go.
Thank you, Joe. Want to bring up the, thank you, council for joining two weeks ago to discuss the airport sighting for South King County. That letter was sent off. Reagan Dunn has grabbed on, well, he's always been on top of it and it's moving forward. So hopefully we don't have to see that as an issue. Thank you to each of the council members. You're all signed up for this Saturday for the Mayor's Day of Concern. So thank you. I won't be able to be there the entire day like normal. But I will be there in the morning. So we'll we'll strive to meet or beat last year's. We did really well last year. And yes, the lunches that Jennifer and Meg started, amazing how two ladies with that much energy can just invigorate the community to help the kids in our community itself. Throughout the Kent School District. So that was awesome. Sound Cities. We have final interview. I believe their final interviews tomorrow. It's been narrowed down to four candidates. It's been a long process and the questions have all been set. So that interview starts at eight thirty tomorrow for all four of them. And hopefully we'll, we'll see next week is our board meeting. So we'll be discussing that and also in the executive meeting to follow it. So hopefully we'll have somebody by the end of the month. With that, that's all I have for tonight. Next up is our second opportunity for public comment. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. Speakers may request additional time on a future agenda as time allows. Notice to all participants pursuant to state law, R C W forty two dot one seven eight dot five 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 campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in City Hall and or during any portion of the council meeting, including audience comment, portion of the meeting is prohibited. If anybody in the audience here wishing to address council tonight. If anybody online wishing to address council tonight, please raise your hand. Seeing nobody wishing to address council at this time, this council meeting is over at nine fifteen tonight. Thank you all very much.